I'd like to call to order the June 6, 2011, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, glad to have you all here tonight. Tonight, we have Reverend Kimberly Ferby from the New Bethlehem Church of Christ to lead us in our invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Welcome.
Greetings. Let us bow our heads. Oh gracious, oh Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you in your presence. In God we ask that you be with us as we govern your work, as we govern your business, and give us unity. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is approval of the agenda. We had a work session scheduled at 5:30 this afternoon. We did not have it, it was canceled, so that was removed. We have two changes to tonight's agenda. I'd like to add to the consent agenda resolution, designating Citibank as the Bank of Record for Health Benefits. And also, I would like to delete item seven. Do I have a motion?
Same here.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item number two is public comment. We have three people that are signed up for public comment. This is a time to hear comments from the public on items of interest. Please limit your time to three minutes, and Mr. McCree, our attorney, will be the timekeeper. First, we have signed up Mr. Mike Flores. Please come forward and give your name and address with the records there. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mike Flores, I'm in Point Harbor, and I'm here tonight representing, as the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Currituck County Chamber of Commerce. And it's my great pleasure tonight to introduce to you formally our new President, Mr. Josh Bass, who has just come onboard this month. Josh hardly needs introduction in Currituck County. He's raised here and graduate of Currituck High School. He is a graduate of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And he has, one of the reasons why we were excited about choosing our, that helped us make our decision in choosing Josh was his considerable involvement in public service and involvement in community affairs. Josh has served on a number of local boards, currently is on Tourism Board, and he's just great to have him with us. So, anyway, I just wanted to stop and introduce him to you formally. Also, Josh will be giving you an update here a little later on, on the buy local campaign and the progress on that, and just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board for allowing us to participate in that program, and we look forward to continuing on with that. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike. One thing about it, you went to a good school, son.
Thank you.
Good football team this year, hopefully, too. Thanks. And we look forward, at the Chamber, the staff looks forward to working with the county hand in hand as we move forward, so.
We do as well, thank you. Next, we have Cameron Lowe.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I am doing well. I've got a real brief presentation for you this evening. As many of you know, the Currituck Goes Green Initiative was begun in 2008 as a partnership between Cooperative Extension, county government, and some other agencies. It originally started with our Planning Department and Cooperative Extension, and then expanded vastly to include North Carolina Sea Grant, the Coastal Federation, East Carolina, North Carolina State University, the Coastal Studies Institute, other county departments. And the Currituck Goes Green Initiative has and is continuing to do some good work. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. You may remember the Going Green Expo, the demonstration sites that were established with families and farms in Currituck County. You, as the Commissioners, adopted a sustainability resolution. The Commerce Park design where Cooperative Extension is currently located, the plan was revised to improve our stormwater design. And most recently, a grant was received from the Albemarle Pamlico National Estuary Program to develop an environmental demonstration site. And that demonstration site was to redesign and retrofit the stormwater retention ponds that currently serve our facility, as well as to locate a wildlife garden adjacent to the large pond in the front that uses native plant species. That project was completed in October of 2010, and that time, I thought it appropriate to submit an application to the university on behalf of the county for a Local Government Engagement Award. The Office of Extension, Engagement, and Economic Development at North Carolina State University presents this award each year to a local government entity that partners with NC State to model a mutually beneficial relationship. That's the hallmark of a truly engaged university. And tonight, I am pleased to announce that Currituck County was selected for that award. So, I'd like to officially present to you the Local Government Engagement Partnership Award, presented to the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, given in recognition of visionary leadership and modeling mutually beneficial relationships with community and higher education partners. From North Carolina State University Office of Extension, Engagement, and Economic Development, April 18, 2011. So, I'd like to present that to you guys, and thank you for your work in support of that initiative.
Mr. Moore, thank you very much.
And before I finish up my time, I'd just like to introduce the next person who's on your public comment lineup. I have not officially introduced her to the Board yet, so I'd like to do that tonight. Our new Family and Consumer Sciences Extension Agent, Ms. Olivia Jones, has a brief presentation that she'd like to make as well.
Cameron, I'd say on behalf of the Board and on behalf of the county as well, because our Planning Department, a lot of people have put a lot of work into making this Going Green Initiative go. Mr. Ben Woody and all of his staff deserve loads of credit, so let me just modify my thanks. There certainly have been the major players, so thank you.
All right, and as Cameron said, I'm Olivia Jones, and this year, North Carolina Cooperative Extension Family and Consumer Science is celebrating its centennial anniversary. And in honor of this anniversary, a history book was published through private donations. This book highlights the success of Family and Consumer Science agents, as well as Extension and Community Association members, all over the state for the past 100 years. All of the 100 counties of North Carolina are represented in this book for their extraordinary service. And on behalf of Currituck County's Cooperative Extension Family and Consumer Science Program, I would like to present you with a copy of this book, Ordinary Women: Extraordinary Service, for your support of our program. We are also offering these books to the library for the public to read, and we have them for purchase at the Extension Office. So, thank you for your time and support.
Item number three, it gives me great pleasure to be a part of this one. It's a recognition of services charter members to the Currituck Fire, Currituck County Fire and EMS Board. I'm going to ask all the Commissioners to join me at the podium. I will ask Chris Daly, Chief Daly, Chief Galgansky, Greg Laput, and Albert Stegner to join us there as well. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a Fire and Emergency Services Advisory Board in the county. These gentlemen were charter members of that board, they've done a lot of work. It's a multi-makeup of the board. You have fire people that are fire chiefs that are part of it, and we also have just citizens from the community, so we have input from both sides. And their sole purpose and focus is to figure out how to deliver emergency services to our customers, our citizens in this county better. And it takes, I take great pride in presenting these awards to them. Certificate of Appreciation. In grateful recognition for your dedicated service as a charter member of the Currituck County Fire and EMS Advisory Board, we hereby present Chief Chris Daly with a certificate of appreciation on 26th day of May, 2011. Thank you, sir. Same thing. In recognition of your dedication and service as a charter member of the Currituck County Advisory and EMS Advisory Board, we hereby present Chief Rick Galgansky with a certificate of appreciation. Mr. Laput, I don't see, he's not present, I guess. And last but not least, Mr. Albert Stegner is one of the citizen representatives. I think he hated to come off of this board, they have a term limit, and to be honest with you, I hated to see him come off. But in grateful recognition of your dedication and service as a charter member of the Currituck County Fire and EMS Advisory Board, we hereby present Albert Stegner with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you, sir. We also have with us this evening the Chairman of this Board, two-term Chairman now, and Mr. Hugh McCain, and I will ask him to say a few words as to.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I'm never at a loss of words when it comes to congratulating and recognizing people that mean so much to this county and the citizens that they serve. I'm in my second term as a member of that Board, and it has been an extreme pleasure on my part to work with these gentlemen. They've given everything they've got to this county to help in any way they can, and they've educated me. I can tell you, I knew nothing about fire until I got up with these guys, and they've taught me a lot. They've even taken me to a fire or two to educate me. But they've done a lot, and I think in the last two to three years, we've made a great deal of progress in this county and come together as a good unit in the Fire and EMS Department. And I congratulate these gentlemen because they provided that leadership. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would any of you gentlemen like to say a word?
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Next, only gentle ladies and gentlemen, is item four, presentation on buy local. I think Mr. Josh Bass is going to do this presentation. And, okay, yeah, okay, it's a cooperative effort here. We also have Peter Bishop and Diane Norstrom with us as well.
Yeah, and Judy Vassar from the Tourism Office. We came up as a team this evening. If y'all remember, a few months ago, we came before you and asked for funding to initiate a buy local campaign for Currituck. And I know you had requested that we come back and keep you updated, so hopefully, you have all received a copy of the marketing plan for the buy local campaign. But we wanted to go over a few things for your sake and also for the citizens, to kind of let them know where we stand. With your support, with your funding, again, tourism, economic development, and the Chamber, we're all working together on this buy local campaign, which is a comprehensive effort for us to educate our citizens on the importance of spending their money in Currituck County, keeping that tax base here. This really started because of the effects of the economy and a lot of businesses. Of course, as everybody knows, we have been losing, so we wanted to try to see what we could do, the most we could do to help our local businesses. So, tonight, we're just going to give you a brief overview. It's going to start, Judy's going to start, she's going to go through just a couple of slides about the importance of buying local. We know you guys know this, but we want to educate the people who are in the audience and at home who may be watching. So, thank you for your support, and we appreciate it. We're very excited that we're getting close to a launch date, so I'm going to step out of the way and let Judy take it over.
Good evening, I'm Judy Vassar with Travel and Tourism. As you know, the primary focus of the Travel and Tourism Department is to bring outsiders into the community so that they'll spend their dollars with us. The mission of the buy local campaign is quite different because we're focusing on local citizens. The mission of the program is twofold. One is to promote local businesses, and the other is to educate local citizens on the importance of buying from local businesses. What is a buy local program? It's simply a program designed to educate local citizens on the importance of spending their money with local businesses. Spending money in the community can make a difference. It's also a program that includes both independent local businesses, as well as franchises and chains. Some buy local campaigns exclude the chains, the big box businesses, but we want to include all of them. They are important to the Currituck economy, they contribute jobs and revenue. It's also a movement and a change in buying behavior. If we can get people to stop, think, and buy local when they're making their purchasing decisions, when you're driving home from Virginia, if you can wait to cross the line into Currituck County, buy your gas here, buy your groceries here, it can have an impact, it can make a difference. It also promotes the economic, social, and environmental benefits of shopping locally. It keeps the revenue in the county, it keeps tax revenue in the county, it provides places for us to shop, it keeps residents shopping in Currituck County, and it keeps residents living in Currituck County also. Some of the top reasons to buy local include keeping the tax revenue in Currituck. For example, 1% of all state sales tax is reallocated back to the county each month, and those funds can be used to help support the Fire Department, the Police Department, education, and other services. It also has a multiplier effect. Local businesses use other local businesses, and this circulates the revenue in the county. It helps retain current jobs and create new jobs. It's a community investment by both residents and businesses. Local business owners put a lot of time and money into their businesses. They know you, you know them, their reputation is at stake, and they have an investment in the community. They will take good care of you, and you may get much better service from a local business person than someone online, for example. It keeps our community unique. When people come into our community, they don't want to drive through another interstate town and see cookie cutter businesses, they want to see the unique shops, they want to see the character of Currituck County, the charm of Currituck County. And we have that in Currituck County, and we want to promote those businesses so that they can keep their doors open and thrive. Local businesses support community groups. They are going to give back to the community, they will give to the Little League, they will give to the churches, they will give back to education, they will give their time and their money. In summary, when you buy local, it has a domino effect. It keeps revenue, it keeps jobs in our community, and that's the point we want to make with the buy local campaign. And now, Peter Bishop, Director of Economic Development, will tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. When we were researching the buy local campaign, and I will say that tourism staff especially put in a lot of hours of finding out who's done the buy local campaign before, what were some of the best practices that were engaged and done in those different programs. As our good friend President Harry Truman once said, "The only history you don't know, the only thing new in the world that you don't know is the history that you don't know." So, these things have been around, boy, I sure did butcher that quote, didn't I, gentlemen? The only thing, the only thing new in the world, rather, is the history you do not know. So, these programs have been existing and have been successful throughout the country. Even here in North Carolina, we've seen some really good examples, hundreds if not thousands of them. Each buy local program is done differently, whether the product itself is an agricultural product through a farmer's market, or trying to encourage more buying of local produce. Our friends at the Extension Office, the State Extension Office is actually doing a 10% buy local food campaign that sort of works in conjunction with this, but that's an example of one way to do this. Some other communities actually have different organizations running these buy local campaigns. What you're going to hear tonight is a pretty unique partnership of county government and the Chamber and county departments, but often, independent business associations will do a buy local campaign and try and drive more people into non-franchised independent businesses versus just all businesses. Some places charge a fee to be a part of this, to be a part of a buy local campaign. Buy local campaigns also have different interesting hooks to them. One that we researched very closely was Keep Louisville, Louisville, Kentucky Weird, and the Keep Weird idea was more to keep, you know, the independent businesses, the place where you see some piercings and tattoos and the hipster generation enjoying their downtown environments. That's more the independent side. You know, that was a consideration that we looked in, but there's a lot of different considerations, a lot of different ways that these things are done. And Currituck's definitely unique. I wouldn't go so far as to say Currituck's weird like some of these other locations try to brand, but we're certainly a unique community that's going to need a unique set of stances here. So, we worked with a marketing plan, and we actually engaged some of our old friends from Lawrence Park Marketing Company to help us out with this. And we had a couple of guiding principles, as Judy mentioned. We wanted a no-cost program, no cost to businesses, no cost to the folks that would be, citizens that would be participating. We also wanted a very simple plan, something that was going to be easy to understand, easy to get done. We wanted something long-term that wasn't going to have a lot of cost burden on it for the county or the Chamber or any of our partners. So, we were looking, working with a couple of these factors, and then looking at what some of these other folks did, and in this plan, we started to map this all out. And the starting point for the plan really is, next slide, please, really is the brand. And you'll see it right there, right in front of you, very simple, very bright, buy local Currituck. It's simple because the message itself is simple. Buy local Currituck. That's the message we're trying to get off, there's action in it, there's a statement, there's a value in it. And personally, I like it because the logo colors match the economic development logo, that's just a little aside. But the concept itself, as Judy was explaining, is keeping your money growing by planning it locally. Spend those dollars locally, they'll recharge, they'll bring everything together. Simple concept, the behavior now is hard to change, and it's going to take some effort to educate and get the behavior of the consumers of Currituck County to recognize that value. But the value proposition's simple. Buy local Currituck, it's going to be better than every, better for everybody. Now, this marketing plan also includes several different tactical steps that the county's going to take in partnership with the Chamber to get this program out and get it viral, as the kids would say these days, get it to be a guerrilla campaign. And what I say, that ties directly into the reducing cost over time for this program. You front-load it with grocery bags that we'll be handing out here in a minute with Velcro stickers and little stickers that go different places that say buy local Currituck. You sponsor events, you keep little feeder events going on as the year continues, and you'll realize that through word of mouth, through that advertisement, there's a lot of mileage, there's a lot of momentum behind the discussion, behind the action that we're going to be doing on the front end. So, we're trying to get this to a point where the program, this is not a one-year program, this is not a two-year program, this is a program for the rest of our lives, our family's lives, and our grandchildren's lives here in Currituck County, to keep people buying local forever. And that's really what this marketing plan set us up to do, that's how we've organized the different website, the different marketing materials. And to talk a little bit more about the message, I'll bring in Josh Bass with the Currituck Chamber. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
Well, thank you, Peter.
Thank you. First, let me thank you for your support of this important program that highlights our local businesses. It is our local businesses that are the economic engines of our community, that give back to our community, create our local jobs, support our charities, and the business leaders that are a part of our community. Thank you also to the Board of the Chamber of Commerce for allowing us as Chamber staff to participate in this important campaign for the county. So far, we at the Chamber have talked to 53 businesses around the county about buy local, signing them up for the program, and talking to them about sponsorship opportunities. The responses have been overwhelming and terrific. The businesses are very grateful that we have a group of Commissioners that stand up for our local business community. The next two slides that we're going to show you, this one and the next, you will see concept ads that explain what the campaign means to the people of Currituck. They illustrate that spending money in Currituck will keep sales tax dollars here to help fund local schools, teachers, fire departments, and sheriff's departments, and it's very appropriate that the firemen were honored here tonight. Is this campaign really is something that should go to help their departments as well? The second slide that is there, the second slide highlights the benefits for the citizens, that jobs will be kept here in the county, that residents will be able to save money on gas because they'll be shopping closer to home, that extra tax money will be kept here in the county to help things like schools, fire, EMS. Local community groups look to our local businesses first for raffle items and for fundraisers. Those are the groups that they target for their donations. These businesses help community groups when asked, and we need to remember to shop them first. The next slide shows what the draft of the website will look like. The text in this ad is just placer text, but it shows the basic design. This website will allow businesses to go in and add their information as needed. Our goal is to sign up every business in the county, and since we at the Chamber have already talked to 53 of our businesses, we're trying to make sure that every business in the county knows about this campaign. The target date for the launch of the website is in six to eight weeks, so we are trying very hard to go ahead and get this up and running so that we can start generating that money to go back into your budget. This site is designed to be simple and easy to use so that the public can find their information and businesses can show what they have to offer and offer discounts and promotions. The next slide that we have is a flyer that we will be distributing around the county. Businesses will be able to offer discounts and promotions on the websites, and we'll have businesses that will be able to offer incentive prizes periodically to encourage citizens to participate in this campaign. We will produce promotional items such as window clings, napkins, coasters, the bags that some of you will be receiving tonight, to promote the buy local campaign throughout the county. As the public listens to tonight's buzzet presentation, I hope that they will increase how much they shop in Currituck, which will help provide funds to fire, EMS, schools, the Sheriff's Department, and all those very important services that the county provides. And I believe we're ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board?
I'd just like to make a comment, it seems like everyone is onboard with the County and the Chamber, and thank you all very much. I'm looking forward to it, help the economy here in the county and all the businesses. Thank you.
And I would just like to comment, it sounds like an awful lot of work has been done in the last two or three months, and.
And I'd like to thank, too, the businesses that have been working with us. It hasn't just been the four of us, there have been a lot of businesses. I'd say we've got a group of about 30, 35 businesses that have come to the business meetings that we held, and we still email, we stay in touch with them, they give us feedback, so we want to thank all of them. They've been an integral part of it, of how we've gone with the development of the website, how the marketing plans all gone, so we feel like we've gotten very good business feedback and appreciate what they've done to help us out.
Hopefully, as time goes along, this will pay good dividends, not only for the county but for the local businesses that are struggling so bad out here today. And again, thank you all, and you'll be commended for the work that you're doing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that this really started sometime back when Mr. Rohr was on the ED Board, and y'all kicked it around and got the idea going. And bringing the Tourism Department and the Chamber of Commerce. And bringing the Tourism Department and the Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with the ED Board has really, I think it's really going to give our program something that a lot of the other programs don't have. You've got three different entities that have come together to make this a good program. So I say, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, and thank you. And you've all done a wonderful job, and I look forward to it.
I have a comment, too, if you don't mind. I just want to make an observation, actually a shameless plug for some new businesses that have come along since this has actually started. Up in the Food Lion, up at Moyoc, Grimms Sandwich Shack is open recently. I don't know, is A.J. Gator's actually open? Okay, I haven't been up there yet, I don't get out that much. Okay. And down in the Grandi Food Lion Shopping Center, there's a new little, I guess it's a accessories and beach wear and fashion shop called Fashion Forward. Any of you ladies, if you haven't been there, go down there and take a look at that, because she's really got some neat stuff, particularly accessories and so on. And I think that's going to be a great addition there. But the real exciting news, too, is the Ace Hardware is open. All of you guys out there, now, we've got a place to go, and of course, I have to get a note from my wife before I can go. But I went down there today, and it's a beautiful store. They're having a grand opening on the 22nd, starting 11:00 in the morning, 11 to 2:00, free food, so put it on your calendar, make sure you go down and see it. Because it's really a great facility, and I'm tickled to death to see these new businesses coming along, and we want to support them and make sure they're successful.
I'd like to piggyback something about that. Mr. Manager, it'd be nice to see some of the department heads start showing up at some of these grand openings and, and putting a face with the county so that these businesses and ribbon cuttings will know who the staff people are, not just who the Commissioners are that are after the free food. They need to know who some of the staff people are, department heads, the inspections department, the planning department, the managers department, the county attorney. There's so many people from the county government that needs to start showing up to some of these things, and I know that you'll make sure that that happens on the 22nd.
Yes, sir.
I tend to agree with Paul. I think it would help our public relations. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's not as good as we would hope it would be, and putting a face to that may certainly help. So, Mr. Bishop.
I'd like to comment or compliment the Tourism Department. It was really neat the other night, my wife and I were watching the Travel Channel, and to see Currituck County advertised on the Travel Channel was really exciting. I mean, good job. That's all, good job. And it was, it was nice, nice to see what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, do you have something?
Yes. What y'all have done is defy logic, because this is truly a public private partnership that's beginning, and it appears that it's working. Hopefully, as those 30-some businesses that are coming to the meeting seize the value to the efforts that you're undertaking, they'll tell fellow businessmen, and this program will grow. So just keep up the good work, and just thank you for all that you've done and will do for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to echo the same comments that the other Commissioners offered. Thank you all very much, especially in the Moyoc area. I am hearing lots of good things about the bi-local program and, you know, a couple emerging businesses, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And Peter, just reminding, we should do a commercial now, speaking of commercials, that if there's any business out there listening that hasn't heard from Josh or any of us yet, to, to please call us. And Jeff Nelson, by the way, with Grimms Sandwich Shack, was just appointed to the Tourism Board, so we'll be having him at some board meetings coming up soon. But yeah, if anybody doesn't, if they'll contact either the Chamber, Tourism, or Economic Development, we will get the form to them and get them signed up, get them ready.
Give out the phone number.
Yeah, give them the number.
BR549.
I'm going to have to look up my office phone number since this was my...
453-9497. This week was my first full week, so I'm still learning.
You never call yourself anyway.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we have item five. I will ask our distinguished manager, Mr. Scanlon, to present the budget for 2012, and then we can set a public hearing date. Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, first I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for the hard work that y'all put into preparing this document. On behalf of myself and Sandra Hill and the staff in the Finance Department, it's my pleasure tonight to present to you our proposed annual operating budget for the 2011, 2012 fiscal year. Want to start off with a little bit of background. We are required by North Carolina General Statutes to prepare a balanced budget. Unfortunately, the federal government doesn't have that mandate, but we do at local government, and we are presenting to you tonight a balanced budget. As a budget, this is probably the most major fiscal responsibility a Board of Commissioner has. Through this budget process, by appropriating financial resources, you have directed the vision of what you would like to accomplish through your departments and through our projects next year. So again, it's probably one of the most major responsibilities a Board of Commissioners has. What I want to show you now is, we've gone through some very tough economic times in the last several years, and I think now we're looking at a new economic reality. What I want to show you, and you'll see further in the presentation, the two major revenues that supports county government is our property tax and sales tax. And I want to show you some, just some data to show what's happening in that arena so you could see what the impacts are and this new economic reality that we're, we're, we're coming into. First thing I want to show you is building permit revenues over the last probably 15 years. As you can see, we had this tremendous run-up in construction that peaked about 2004. The recession hit, the bottom fell out. We all, we experienced that, we lived that, we're aware of that. But what I want you to notice is the very end. This hasn't been a recession to where it was a drop and we started recovering and coming back up. What we've experienced in the last probably year and a half is that building permits have come flat. We've leveled out. The importance of this, and the importance of this particular side, land transfer tax, land transfer tax shows movement in real estate in the county. What you're seeing is the same pattern, is over the last 18 months, like it's two years, you've seen this flattening out of both building permits, land transfer tax. This speaks to our tax base and growth in our tax base that we'll experience in the upcoming years. And what I'm anticipating or what you're seeing is there's going to be nominal to no increase in our tax base. Property taxes being our number-one revenue, if there is no growth in that revenue, it means we are not in a position to enhance services, expand services, offer new initiatives. It means that for several years now, we are going to be in this new economic reality of maintaining very tight fiscal level budgets. The third slide in the series I wanted to show you is sales tax. It's probably appropriate that I'm following a bi-local program, and they talked about the benefits of keeping sales tax local. This graph is showing you sales over the last 10-plus years. And as you can see, in the summer, the peaks are always in the summertime, and the valleys are in the winter. You can see basically the same run-up we saw through 2000, 2004, 2005. You saw each, each summer was a little bit greater than the previous summer, and then we went through a period of repressed sales. Last summer, we started out July on a gangbuster, and you can see this incredible peak. In fact, we set records for this area in sales. Unfortunately, it was not sustained. As you can see, as quickly as it went up, it has dropped, and we are back down now in our sales volume, about as low as we have been in the previous years. So we're not seeing that sustainable growth in our sales tax base to provide additional revenue sources and try to help support county government. So the bi-local program, hopefully, folks will heed this. Sales tax and buying local, there's many benefits to it, but keeping our tax, tax rate low and being able to support our schools at the level we have is certainly an overwhelming benefit of buying local.
Mr. Scanlon, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What do you attribute that peak to? I mean, have you analyzed that at all?
We have not. Other revenues we've seen has kind of followed that. Last July, we just had a very, very strong going into the tourism season. I think there was a lot of optimism around, and then you started seeing the economic indicators come back out, that optimism was not sustainable, and you saw a quick drop back. And we're seeing that in other revenue sources, too, but the specifics on that I've not gotten that far into.
Thank you.
Getting into the actual budget, we'll talk about our general fund. First question always asked is, is there a tax rate proposed? And there is not. We're not proposing to raise any taxes in this. It is about as flat as a budget as we could present. In fact, I'll show you in a few minutes, it's about down 1.5%, down over the budget as it exists at this moment in time. Unfortunately, we're not, we're not in a position to offer cost of living to our employees. It'll be the second year in a row that we just have not had the resources to support that. As all businesses know, the cost of health coverage has a major impact on business operations. We're no different. We this year have had to go through a major reworking of our Health Share Program. We've gone away from the traditional pay $25 copay when you go to the doctor, and we've gone to a high deductible consumer-driven insurance program that hopefully will start capping our insurance costs, and we'll see benefits in years to come. Probably one of the biggest projects we're going to see in the budget, and we'll be talking about this next year also, is every eight years we are required to revalue the whole county. We are starting the field work next year. Folks will see, start seeing our contracted services folks coming out, they'll be in the field, leading up to a big conversation next year as we start talking about the revaluation of our tax base. When you look at county government and how we are funded, again, this is the general fund, which is our daily-day operations, the things that most folks are aware of when they talk about county government. Over half of our operating cost comes from our property tax. And as we just showed, the property taxes are being very flat, and you can see the distribution of the remaining fees. Want to look at the top five resources. These five revenues right here represent 80% of the total revenues that we collect in the fiscal year. Property taxes by far is the greatest, followed by sales tax. We, we'll get into this later on tonight. Some oxy tax is transferred into the general fund to support some services that we provide on the Outer Banks. We are dipping into our, proposing to dip into our rainy day fund to stabilize our tax base, and we are looking at supporting some debt service out of our school capital reserve, which again is a sales tax revenue. The property tax, the top, tax base valuation, as you see over the last several years, you see that spike, that's the last time we did revaluation in 2005. You can see from that point forward, it is starting to level out. In the last couple of years, you can see it almost becoming flat. This is always a question that comes up, is the tax base by region? It's showing our communities, and the takeaway from this is that 66% of our tax base, 2/3 of our tax base is generated on the Outer Banks. Again, our property tax is proposed to be kept still at 32 cents, and you can see the history of the last 10 years, that you see the, it was dropped from 62 cents to 32 under revaluation, and it has been a very stable tax rate since then. To put that in perspective, what 32 cents represents or what it looks like when you compare it to 100 other counties, you can see the seventh, we're the seventh lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina, to give you a sense of what those rates look like. Every time I show this slide, it's always brought to my attention, if you look at the six that are lower than us, all of them have municipal areas. So this represents county rates. All these folks would pay a county, if you're in a municipal area, you'd pay a county rate plus municipal rate, so I think that actually even speaks better for where we rank. Then you can see what it looks like, what a high rate looks like compared to where we're at.
So in essence, from just a county perspective, our tax rate is the lowest in the state?
You certainly can make that point.
Thank you.
The general fund operation, the budget that I'm presenting tonight is just about Breaking that down to how we operate, these are the different public sectors you can see. Looking at public safety and education, those two combined represents about 60% of what we do is funded in those two organizations. And you'll see in a few minutes, the education is by far the most expensive thing that county government does. County governments are service providers. Our people is our best asset. Breaking down the $45 million in a different perspective, it shows that 43% of our budget goes to cover our personnel cost and operating costs in education. Here are the top five largest things that we fund. You saw the five largest revenues. These five large expenditures, this represents 60% of our overall budget. By far, public schools is, is our highest. EMS, the Sheriff's Department, social services, and the jail. And as you can see, other than EMS, all those are mandated services that county governments are required to provide.
And just to let the public know, as far as public schools, we are ranked where at in the state as far as funding for public schools, Currituck County?
I'm not sure of the exact ranking, but we're consistently the top 10% of funding entities in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
If you look at individual departments, and which departments are experiencing the largest increase in this proposed budget, it's these four departments here. Parks and Recreation is receiving the biggest increase. That is a bit of a misnomer. The largest part of that is the folks that are aware of the Veterans Park. We have a, lack of a better description, a dock, there's, there's a platform that extends into the intercoastal. It has unfortunately been struck a couple of times and is in need of some structural repairs, and we've put about 200, I think, $250,000, $280,000 in the budget to go ahead and address that, that feature, and that's driven Parks and Recreation. EMS coming at 254. Last year, we did a pilot program where we moved a unit and stationed it year-round at the Kilmarik Fire Station, and we put a seasonal unit up into Crowva Beach, and we ran that as a pilot program. This year, we're coming in and providing the funds to provide that services year-round, provide that service at the same level we did last year, but to retain our commitment to that. And the jails, and I'll show you in a second, schools, we are fortunate enough that we are actually, although it's a modest increase, we are providing an increase in schools. Looking at our departments overall, of the 48 different departments and agencies we're funding, 19 of them asked for increases. The average increase across those 19 departments is $32,000. Four was no changed, and 25 of our departments and agencies actually saw a decrease in funding. A quick slide on employment. You can see the different colors here coming up. The red is the amount of our employees that are employed in the public safety arena, which is by far the largest thing we provide, the light blue being government, general government. We have 362 full-time equivalent employees this year, and proposing, proposing to maintain the same level next year. To put percentages against that, you can see over half our employees are employed in public safety positions.
That includes the Sheriff's Department as well.
Yes. Public safety being sheriff, jail, EMS, fire.
Thank you.
Over the last five years, we have added 13 employees overall to the county government, and you can see a breakdown of how those were employed. And yes, there's actually a couple of years where we decreased, in certain departments, we decreased the employees. This year, we're not proposing any new employees, nor are we asking to reclassify any positions in the, in the budget. We mentioned schools briefly. We are fortunate, one of the counties that a long time ago, 15-plus years ago, the Board of Commissioners had the foresight to put in a funding formula that has served us incredibly well. In fact, we've been the envy of a lot of the counties as they go back and start looking at what we do. Applying that formula, it is based on ADM, as ADM changes in its cost of living, it calculates out what we pay per student. You can see, although we had for the fifth year in a row, I think it's one, two, three, four, six years in a row, we've had a decrease in the amount of students attending our schools. Cost of living did increase the amount we provided per student. Next year, we're proposing to provide $2,240 per student, and it is provide them, I think, about a $25,000 increase, and this is local current expense, their instructional part of their budget. What I just covered was our general operating budget, our general fund budget. We have other budgets we add into it, so we're starting to build to the total county budget. I'll show you a slide of what we're adding in, but that brings now our budget increases from $45 million to just, just under $66 million. And what we're adding in is these parts here. We've got revaluation, the oxy tax, special revenue funds, and service districts are our stormwater districts, and the districts that have special taxes assessed to them, enterprise are our utilities, and our post-employment benefit brings the budget to that stage. We are proposing a couple of fee increases, depending on where you are in the county, will, depending on whether this fee increase applies to you or not. The first one that we are recommending or suggesting, this does apply to everybody in the county. This is a solid waste availability fee that is billed on your property tax. We started this assessment, I think, in the mid-1990s, and it's never been increased. If you are, have a curbside collection, which is basically corolla, they paid, right now they pay $235 a year for curbside collection. We're proposing to increase that $15 for the year, so the bill would go to 250. Everybody else in the county that works off a convenience center, again, a $15 increase that would go from $99 to $114. Unfortunately, we are asking that we increase our tipping fees for those that go across the scales at Maple. We're doing this because the current contract with the hauler has a, an escalator based on fuel prices in it. And as we've seen over the last several months, the escalating in fuel prices, that gets passed on to us. We do not make money off our scales. We do not make money off our scales. This is money that we end up having to collect and turn around and pay to Burpee County when the trash is ultimately hauled there and we're asking $3 a ton, both an in-county and out-of-county increase on that.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Explain out-of-county.
Couple of years ago, we were seeing that the amount of tonnage coming into Curritah County just didn't seem in balance with what we were seeing elsewhere and we started to do some investigation and we found out at that time that our tonnage fee at our scales was cheaper than all of our surrounding counties. So there was an encouragement or incentive from folks from Camden and Dare County and Pasan County to actually to come to our landfill and dump because it was cheaper. So what we've done now is if you're identified and we know that you're bringing trash from outside the county, we actually raised our fee to make it more expensive than your host counties to, again, try to reverse that trend and drive folks back into their own county. But you'd have people from the Outer Banks that would be coming through and they would stop and it was, Dare County's, I think landfill is down at East Lake and it's quite a haul for them and so it's closer and cheaper for them to come to Curritah County. So we put that out-of-county fee in there.
I have a question about that too. On the curbside collection on the Outer Banks, do they also pay the convenience center fee?
They do not. They do not. You pay one of these, one of these, not both.
Well, the reason I question is, interesting anomaly, because the households on the mainland who get curbside collection, for instance, I know Rivers Edge has that, Waterside Villages has that, Carolina Club has that. If you add up the fees for that, it's substantially higher than what they charge over in Corolla for curbside collection, because we're paying $99 for the convenience center, plus anywhere from $18 to $28 a month. I think you're paying more than 28 or 30 something.
Thirty-one, I think.
Yeah, and you multiply that and, you know, we're not getting any bargains over here.
This fee does not represent the total cost of collecting and full disposal of trash. What this fee covers, whether you're in a convenience center or whether you're at curbside, is the cost of picking the trash up and bringing it to Maple. We use a portion of our property tax to cover the cost of having the trash hauled from Maple to Burpee. So this in itself is not, does not represent the full cost that we have, where if you had a private hauler, not only are they having the cost to the homeowner, but when they go across our scales, they would be paying that in-county fee to us when they come in that they would have to recover through the rates. So you can't just look strictly at 235 and say that we're doing it a whole lot cheaper, although I hope we're doing it cheaper. There is some additional cost that we have in there.
Yes, there might be some economies of scale as far as offering that collection through whatever medium you're doing elsewhere.
Yes. The following fees that we're going to show, not everybody will pay these fees. It depends on if you are a user of the particular service. We'll start out with the airport. The Airport Advisory Board has recommended, and I'm certainly supporting, an increase, a $25 a month increase in those aircraft that is located in our T hangars, which is basically our A hangar and most of the units in our B, I think we've got two commercial in B. We are proposing that that does not become effective until the first of the year to allow us time to get through the construction period. We have some, I'll explain to you, and our manager commented that we're actually going to close down the airport operations for a couple of weeks as we do finish up the taxiway. We didn't think it'd be appropriate to be coming out at this time with an increase when we're temporarily suspending some services. So we're proposing that effective January 1st, that we raise that $25 for those.
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
How does that compare to our neighbors' T hangar rates?
From my understanding, I believe that is why it was a $25 recommendation, is the airport manager did a survey of surrounding communities and came back with a recommendation to this, the Airport Advisory Board, and I believe that's what they support.
Yes, that's correct.
That puts us in line with other communities.
Yes.
But not more, just...
It aligns us.
We'll be talking with the board in June. We have been, we've actually been discussing for some time, the need to replace the wastewater plant at Ocean Sands. In advance of that, we do feel like our current sewer rates are out of line with the cost of providing that service. Right now, we charge half of what you use in water and we're proposing in this budget to bring the sewer rate up equal to what the water rate is. And this is in advance, we'll be making a recommendation here in the next month or two, moving forward with a major capital project to replace that wastewater system and these fees will be needed to generate to cover the cost of that project. On the mainland water, we talked last year, I think at the budget, or excuse me, at the audit actually, that we had fell slightly under what our bond covenant had required us to do. It required us to hire an engineer to come in and do a rate study. What we are recommending here, and this will only affect commercial accounts and large user commercial accounts, the way our rate schedule is today is our commercial accounts were frozen at $6.50 per thousand. If you look at the residential side, they keep moving from $6.50 to $7.50 to $8.50. This recommendation is to bring our commercial rates in line with our residential rates. So everybody, every class of folks that would be using up to 20,000 gallons would be paying $7.50 and anybody who uses over 20,000 gallons would be paying $8.50. And this should be bringing us back in line with our bond covenants. Newtown Road Sewer System, they play a fat, a flat fee of $20 per month and we're recommending that that be moved up to $26. And fortunately, I believe that's, that is the extent of the fees that we're asking to increase. Add capital projects or capital funding into the budget we've talked so far and it brings our total budget to just under $66 million, actually $65,971,000 is the cost of providing all the services we do in the upcoming year. And you can see that we're adding some capital project in there. Quick review of the major capital projects that we are, will be underway. This does not include projects that are already been authorized or are already underway like the community center. These are new initiatives that will be taken up under the budget. Everybody's aware by now that we were successful in working in a partnership with the COA. We start looking at design services for an aviation technical training center. A large project, I've been here, well, I've been over here over 20 years now and we have never improved our communications ability, our public safety communications ability outside of our 911 center. The towers, the antennas and everything in the field is basically the same way it's been since the early 80s or even in the 70s. Couple that with a couple of new FCC regulations that are coming down, dealing with narrowbanding, issues that were experienced as far back as Katrina with agencies inability to communicate with each other. There's a general trend to move public safety responders all into an 800 megahertz range so that they can communicate with each other. I'm making a recommendation that we move down that path and start in that direction. Under the first year, it's a two-year program, the first year being focused on our field work, going out and identifying our sites. The goal is to control and manage all of our sites by going on either towers we own or water tanks that we own, but going ahead and undertaking, putting new antennas and the new equipment out in the field that's necessary for us to move to 800 megahertz. Next year's budget coming in and actually buying the radio systems, so spreading this over a two-year period of time. It's a long time coming and I think our public safety folks would be very pleased to see that we're in a position to move this forward. Maple Commerce Park, we continue to make our efforts for and that. We've got the plans, the Board of Commissioners have approved the wastewater plant that's under construction. We want to continue to move the infrastructure in that facility so that we can be competitive and recruiting new businesses. We've got funds in here to look at, start working at the roadwork, stormwater infrastructure, utility infrastructure. There's funds in the budget to start looking at the schematic designs for the animal shelter. Continue our support for the Royal Center, developing the non-equestrian pieces of the Royal Center. As you recall, last year, we went for a part of grant to enhance our water accessibility, some picnic areas and some, again, non-equestrian kinds of events. Part of funds have been withdrawn, they're taking a big hit in the state budget. We'd like to continue to move forward with improving that facility as well as as part of the overall growth that the airports, we systematically have got to relocate those facilities off of Airport Road and we're moving forward with moving some of those infrastructure in, in conjunction with our wastewater treatment plan. Tonight, I'm presenting the budget to you.
I have one question. The, everything that's going on at Maple Park, just so everyone understands, one piece plays into another.
Yes.
As we move forward with the industrial area there, then that will, the infrastructure will then come apart of, for the animal shelter and it's, we're trying to capture all that together instead of in separate pieces.
There's actually a very comprehensive master plan that has all these pieces in it, so that as we're progressing with each piece of infrastructure, as you suggested, we're gaining ground on all of the projects, so it's being done in a concert with each other. But yes.
Thank you.
Tonight, June 6th, I'm presenting the budget to you. Under statute now, I transfer this to you, it becomes a Board of Commissioners budget. You're required to have a public hearing, which we will schedule for June 20th. Depending on what you hear at that meeting, you may or may not want to move forward with adoption of the budget, but we are required to have the budget adopted by July 1st, to become effective July 1st. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have on the budget.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon?
Just have a brief question. Mr. Scanlon, over the last several years, our budget, if we took our budget today versus five years ago, what kind of percentage decrease have we had in our budget? In expense, not capital projects, but just ongoing expense?
I'd have to look at, overall, we have been cutting the budget and have kept it flat now, actually for probably four or five years. I'd have to calculate the overall decrease in it, I don't know the time I had. But I do know for the last several years, we've been bringing budgets that were less than what they had been at the current year.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I have no questions. Would I have?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of folks that mentioned that they wanted to address the airport increase and it wasn't on the agenda. When would it be appropriate for them to speak if they would like?
Next meeting.
It'd be, it'd be the public hearing of the budget, yes.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I would comment too, the budget is, would be available, our county website. I gave you a cursor review of it, the detail all the way down to what the county attorney pays in telephone bills, that level of detail is online. The public can go look at it at our website, that should be loaded up already today. Anybody can go take a look at that. If they have any questions, they certainly can call my office or the finance department, we'd be happy to help answer any questions they might have.
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you, Mr. Scanlon and Mrs. Hill back there, for all the hard work that y'all have done to keep us in the financial condition we are in. And all the employees that we have, all your department heads, everyone that's associated with the Curritah County Government, they've all, they've all took their burden on things and we appreciate it very much. Y'all have done a masterful job and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One other comment. We have a budget meeting on the 14th and we can still tweak this budget.
Yes.
And, because we're looking at what, probably another four hours or so? Is that not true?
I'm not privy to that budget meeting, that's one you're having.
Right now, there is not a budget meeting scheduled. The board certainly can schedule something, but there is, there is...
Was, no one has decided that was sent to us? There was a question on that?
Right now, there is no additional budget hearing scheduled or workshops with the board.
Well, I thought that we had indicated at the last meeting that we would like to send the inclusion of actually being able to start construction on the animal shelter and the schematics there, but I thought that there was some, as a matter of fact, everyone seemed to agree that there were some funds there that we could have transferred and actually put in this budget where we could have started construction after design work, of course, probably next year after we finished the Y on the animal shelter.
The board certainly has time between now and July 1st to amend, to change, to add, delete, anything you want from the budget. So there certainly is time to amend what is being presented tonight if the board wishes to do so.
Well, I think that is a consideration, I think probably, I don't know about the other board members, but I would like to see that included where we can put construction of the shelter, you know, in this budget. I mean, this is a two-year budget. If we don't do it now, then we're looking at, you know, two years before we can break ground for it and that kind of bothers me.
That's exactly what we were looking at and that was my understanding, that we were doing a schematic design and providing that to the Animal Assistance League had asked if we gave them schematics, that it would greatly help their ability to be able to go out and raise funds, that in the first year of the budget, that was what we were going to do and provide that to them so they can go out and do fundraisers. And then a second year of this, the second year budget, two years from now, is move into full construction drawings was, was my understanding of the direction we were going in. But if the board wants to modify that, we certainly can, I mean, that's certainly can be discussed and certainly be addressed.
I'd certainly like to put that before the other members here.
I'm confused. I thought we couldn't do anything with the animal shelter until the infrastructure was put in.
Well, the infrastructure is going to be put in after we complete the Y. I mean, it's going to be there and then we can start construction. Are we going to wait three years now in order to start construction of the animal shelter?
I thought the infrastructure was going to be next year sometime.
Infrastructure will be going in as part of the COA project. It probably will not be going in until next year.
That's what I'm saying, the infrastructure will be next year.
This year, this year to do the design and get the permits for the COA facility with construction to start probably something about this time next year and that's when the roadwork and infrastructure will actually start going in. And it will go by the site where the animal shelter is, so it would provide a roadwork and utilities up to the site that the shelter is proposed to go to.
I'd like to propose a work session, because I'm confused, I'm missing something.
I guess what Mr. Martin and I, we talked about it at the last meeting, was the infrastructure has to go in, I mean, you can't go build a shelter without the infrastructure. You've got to plan for the infrastructure. At what point in time will, first of all, the money be identified and the construction actually be able to start?
Do we have a number on what the building will cost?
Well, I think one of the questions we had, you talked about schematic plans and my understanding from a project this size, that the actual working drawings to build a shelter probably is a year-plus endeavor and substantially more expensive than a schematic. And I think, my understanding was talking with Mr. Martin and Mr. O'Neill both, that we would like to go ahead and start the actual plans so that when the infrastructure was complete and the Y was complete, we'd be in a position to actually start construction of the shelter, because it appeared that that would probably be about two years out in the least case, if we were to go ahead and do the working drawings now as opposed to just a schematic.
Can I ask a question? Do we assign the money now, even though we don't know how much it costs?
Well, again, I don't know, we haven't had a quote, I don't believe, for working drawings.
Well, the last one we had was $200 a square foot and I thought we'd...
I'm talking for drawing the plans, that's a several hundred thousand dollar.
We do have a quote for full-blown construction documents, I think it's 80-some thousand dollars. I sent that out to the board today. The schematic drawings are 17,000, but the full-blown drawings was 80-some thousand dollars.
And that's what I'd like to see approved, is go ahead and include those working drawings so that we're ready to start construction once it's possible to do so, because those drawings are going to take some time to complete.
I think Mr. Petrie is in order with, I think we need to have a work session and sit down and talk about this and get all of our minds together as to exactly what we are doing and move forward from there. Anyone got any dates they would like to suggest?
I'm with Mr. Martin, I thought we were on board for the 14th.
Yes.
At a 4:30 meeting?
I thought about a meeting, but I don't know if we ever actually solidified those plans.
The understanding I had was that we would have the second meeting if we did not finish up the budget agenda items that we had on that one particular day. It would be a second session.
Yeah, we finished up...
And we finished up everything that day, so therefore we didn't need the second meeting. That was my understanding. We stayed late to get it done.
This was on an email that we got here just a week or so ago, last week, and that's, that's where I'm coming from, because I really thought that we'd agreed that we would put in concrete finally, yes, we're going to build the animal shelter. And I would like to propose that we have a work session, whether it be, and it's two hours or whatever, some evening, so that we can look at this and, you know, all of us get our heads together, as some of you said, so that we can move forward on this one way or the other.
Mr. Scanlon, will you please set up a work session on the 14th?
We certainly can do that.
At?
4:30.
Five o'clock, 4:30, five o'clock. It's a pleasure. Is everyone okay?
What can be for dinner, Gwen? When you do? Oh.
Okay.
That's good.
I'll bring a jar of peanut butter, you bring the loaf of bread, John.
Okay, at 4:30, Mr. Scanlon, please set us up for work session, 14th at 4:30. Thank you.
Now, we, we're going to have to determine if we're going to move the main entrance from where it is proposed today to realign those fields and everything. That's got to be decided also before we move forward.
Yes, but you will not know that in a, I mean, we're just now doing some delineations, but that is the plan and...
So at some time, we've got to come back and solidify what we're going to do with animal shelter.
Yes.
Even though we might put the money in there now, we still got to bring it back.
Well, the financial plan I put in front of you right now does not include a building of this, this financial size in it, so it would require me to go back and rework our financial plan to be able to do that, so I will need time to do that.
I want to ask my question again, maybe I didn't understand your answer. Even if you had the money today to build the animal shelter, we made a motion tonight to tell you to do it, it's still going to be a year and a half to two years before you can start building it, correct?
Correct.
So regardless of what we decide on the 14th or adopting this budget, it still cannot be built for a year and a half to two years because of the infrastructure that has to has to be put in.
Drawings and everything.
Drawings.
A combination of the, the actual drawing and permitting of the facility has a time associated with it. But at the same time, we've got to do the drawing and the permitting for the, the road and the access to the site. And yes, it'd be, you're probably very close to two years before the site will be ready for us to be able to access to construct on.
Which is what you are proposing anyways. Is that not correct?
Yes, because it extends beyond, this is only a fiscal year budget. It extends beyond this fiscal year budget. So the second year, so this time next year, I would be bringing you the $80,000 to go into full construction drawings, so that in the second year, the drawings can be going simultaneously with the, the site work that will be going in to bring the road, water lines, wastewater lines, and the utilities in front of this facility as it goes to the, the COA facility.
So approving the schematics, that could be done right now. We could approve you to go forward on the schematics.
Yes.
You can identify the money and go forward with the schematics.
Yes.
But the full-blown drawings is a whole nother story, along with the infrastructure. So you'll be able to clear all that up for us on the 14th? You'll have, be able to lay that out for us?
Well, in the short term, the question is if, if the board wants to put another $70,000 in the budget to do drawings, that although, as you're suggesting, they will be complete, but you won't be ready to construct. But in the longer term, we've got a 10-year capital facilities plan that we put together, based on the projects that's being presented for approval on this budget, that if we inserted another two or three million dollars into, will certainly have some effect on that plan that we will need to take a look at.
Well, I'm, I want to see the animal shelter built, and I'm in a just as big a hurry as anyone else.
I think all of us do.
But I've been on this board a long time, seen a lot of capital projects. You have the schematics first, to see what you're directing the manager to go design the plans. I mean, it's, it's a process. You've got to do the schematics to see what the building is going to look like, before we direct him to go full-blown plans. So I think that we need the schematic approved, and we need that drawn, like, now. But I can't give you direction to spend $80,000 before I see what we're sending you to draw.
Is the work session going to be to talk about the schematic, or building the whole thing right away?
I guess we're going to talk about all of it, but you, you know, when we built the 4H Center, we had schematics. We looked at those, the public saw them, and the board approved them, and then we went and did them. The YMCA Center, we had schematics, the public saw them, we approved them, and then you draw them. On this project, it sounds like we're asking to go draw the plans at the same time we get the schematic, before I see the schematic. I want to see the, what the building's going to look like. I think that's an important part of the process that we've got to do.
It is, because the board has to decide the size of the building. I mean, that is a critical piece of information to determine what the cost of the building could be.
But I do want to see the board committed to the project, but I want to do it in the proper steps, like we've done every capital project I've been a part of.
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars gets that process started.
The seventeen thousand, seven hundred is for the schematic?
Yes.
Which you're talking about.
Yes.
And you've identified that money?
Well, we just got the quote today. I will be identifying that money to bring towards you, to get approved.
At our next, at our next meeting.
I could have that at your next meeting. I could have a budget amendment to go ahead-
In the meantime, we can have the work session, and get the commitment for the timeline and the process.
Schedule a work session, 14th at 4:30. Let's move on. Okay, appointment to the game commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer to our next meeting. I've had a couple folks show interest, after not having any interest, so I would like to defer that to our next meeting, and I will have an appointment. So please let the game board know that I will have an additional person ready for them.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Etheridge had a comment before you moved on.
No, I just want to make sure that we've finished the manager's budget presentation.
Have.
Okay.
Item seven was deleted. Item eight is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? As have it. Next is the commissioner's report. Mrs. Gilbert, I'll start with you.
First of all, I'd like to just announce, I was at the airport on last Saturday with the tenants, and Mr. Elliott, the airport manager, did an excellent job of bringing the tenants together, discussing the closure of the airport during the renovations that we're doing to the runway expansion. Also, I had the opportunity last night to attend the baccalaureate ceremony for the class of 2011, which, there was lots of praise and worship, and just a very good evening. I look forward to seeing the graduates on Friday night, and I just wish them the best in their next endeavors.
Thank you.
One more thing. Mayock Fire Department, Saturday, 8 to 11, is their last breakfast for the summer, and then they're having a, I think it's a fire extinguisher, display at 12 o'clock. So I encourage you to go get your last breakfast, and then they'll go into their summer series of safety presentations.
Thank you. Mr. Petrie?
I would like to commend Mr. Scanlon, Ms. Hill, I think it's Ms. Hill. You're too kind. When you say that your commissioners' hard work, trust me, the people on this board know where the hard work is. So I'd like to commend you. $66 million, and it all balances out. Good job. You make, you make us look good. You make us look good. And thank you very much.
And that takes a lot.
Mr. Rohr?
I've already done all the promotion I need today, so.
Mr. Martin?
Actually, I'd just like to commend everyone that we do have a graduation coming up Friday night, and I know that I'm going to do my best to be there, and I hope, hopefully, we don't have any rain. And looking forward to see the 2011 class of Currituck County High School.
Mr. Etheridge?
Well, if it does rain, I hope it breaks right beforehand, then starts right afterwards, because we're dry. But I too want to thank the staff for all that they've done. We live in a unique county. We are truly blessed, and we are just, I'm proud to sit here as a commissioner, as I'm sure each one of you are, and try to represent the people to the best of our abilities, and I feel like that's what we do.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Well, just briefly, I'm going to be there Friday night at the graduation. I have one that's graduating, so.
You'll be in tears, so why don't you-
Yeah, I'll be tore up. But anyways, Commissioner Rohr and I have identified a lady in Lower Currituck that the Almaral Commission did some rehab work on, and he and I have, I've worked with him since he's our representative on the board of the Almaral Commission, trying to get someone over here to do a look-through and, and take, I don't want to say take a little responsibility, but take a little responsibility for the lady's ceiling falling in on top of her, and her house is leaking tremendously. And we've had, we've had some private people go out there and do a little work to try to stem some of the leaks. But I know that, I don't, you've tried to get somebody to come over here, and I don't think you've been very successful.
No, they've, they've been. They've gone and done an inspection.
Yes, but I would like to see them come and do some things. This is an elderly woman that received some grant funds from the Almaral Commission to fix her house, and I hate to say it, I don't want to talk bad about any contractor, because I don't know who did it. But, you know, a few years after work's done, your ceiling shouldn't be falling in, and your roof leaking like it's doing. And she has nobody to help her with it. So I guess what I'm asking Mr. Scanlon and Mr. McCree, is for the board to send a letter with the chairman's signature, whatever, asking them how they're going to rectify that situation, or if they are going to. You tell me if I'm going too far, Mr. Rohr, but I just would like to see some action on that house.
Well, I've been pushing it every one of the Almaral Commission meetings.
And I know you have, and I appreciate it.
And I've gotten, I think, virtually the same response that you indicated to me back when I volunteered to serve on that board, that I probably would get, which is nothing. I think you phrase it more of a colloquially quaint way, about how useless some things are as appendages. But nevertheless, no, we really don't seem to have much going that way. We have not seen a single one of those projects come to fruition with what I'd consider to be a successful result, and to the extent that the commission has essentially abandoned that type of project, because they've admitted they just can't do them. The issue's going to boil down to, can we do something on a more localized basis? We've talked about the, what a wonderful adventure it would be if we could get the county funded directly in block grants, as opposed to going through commissions like this, because we can handle it. In the meanwhile, I'm working with some other groups locally, and you and I have talked about this. I've put together, you remember Currituck First way back two and a half years ago? Well, we've got another program, guys. It's called Currituck Cares. And what we're trying to do is put together a group of folks, volunteers, faith-based organizations, suppliers, contractors, who will band together in the same vein that Paint Your Heart Out up in the Hampton Roads area, the Habitat for Humanity folks in different areas and all, that can get together and help folks like this that don't seem to have any way to turn. Because I think, honestly, it's going to be up to us as a community to help our neighbors get through these tough times, because from what I've seen, the state's not going to help us. They're not going to have the funding to do it. And these commissions just seem to exist for their own edification.
Yeah, so I'd just like for us to put a little, little weight on them. And we do have some local folks that have gone out and done some work, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done. The lady needs a new roof.
A lot more folks need, too.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Petrie?
Jarvisburg Church did a roof this weekend for somebody that was in need. Was this, are we talking about the same lady?
I don't believe we are, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm just saying, because I know Jarvisburg Christian went out and put a roof on somebody's home that was really in bad shape. So I'm just trying to connect the dots.
I will say this, the, the Almaral Commission, we had the opportunity of trying to work with them for a lady over in Isle Island as well. They were, they come out and they looked at things, but there are so many things in the fine print. You've got to be this, or you can't be that, or you, I mean, it was just, it was, it was just, didn't do, didn't do anything at all. Finally, the ruetons went out and done it, so.
Well, my church has a group that goes out and does things, but it's hard for, to get the people out there, and then to buy the materials and, and coordinate it. It's difficult. Mr. Maya Sato from my church has been out there and replaced the roof fence and, and some things to try to help the lady, but we just need to, they, they need to step up to the plate, and, and at least tell me they're not going to do anything. Look me in the eye and say, "We're not going to do anything," or either we are, so.
Mr. Scanlon, can you send a letter to them, ask them to forward to us their guidelines, so we can at least know exactly what we're talking about, and also bring up this particular incident, and see if there's anything that they can do to help?
Well, first of all, we need to find out who the contractor was that they engaged, because they will, I guess, have bonds-
Was this their project?
This, this was back, the last payment was made. I think Sandra did the research on it. I think it was like 2002 or 2003 was when this work took place. It started in 1996. So it's way past the warranty.
These bonds are claims-made bonds, which means they're active until the claim is made. And, you know, it could be 20, 30 years when you find a defect finally.
I think staff is, knows where we're coming from. Let's give them a chance to figure it out.
Okay, I'll finish up with, I'll look forward to seeing all of you at the graduation on Friday evening, and I'll be there with bells on, and I hope everyone else is there as well, and so we can celebrate our class of 2011. With that, Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, two things. Commissioner Gilbert had mentioned this. I'm going to give you some specifics. We are in the process of tying the Northern Taxiway into the actual airport runway in Apron. So for the remainder of this week, from 7:00 AM to noon, the airport will actually be closed. And starting on the 13th through the end of the June, the airport will be completely closed, as that work is undertaken there right next to the runway. Also, I got a phone call last week. Folks that live around the, the Islet area might see some activity. There is a company here that is doing some borings in the sound, as well as along the route through the swamp of the proposed Mid-Currituck Bridge. They're doing that as consultants to the, the company that has been selected to build the project. They're doing these borings to help the design work on designing the piling system that's going to go in. They're contacting all the property owners, and they're going to contact and talk to them specifically before they enter their property. But if folks see that activity going on, that is, that is consultants working for the contractor to build the facility.
I have a question about the airport. Mike, when you mentioned the airport being closed.
Yes.
I noticed there's a certain small helicopter that has been maintaining power lines down this area, that I know is running back and forth, buying a lot of jet fuel from us at the airport, in that it does not use taxiways. Is it going to be possible for access to be allowed for that? I don't know. Bob, you want to mention whether or not y'all are still engaged in that work down here or not, or?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's a need for it. I, you know, as much fuel as they buy, it'd be nice to have the truck available for them.
I will look into it, but my understanding is when we're closed, we're closed. But I will, I will confirm that.
Okay.
And I'd like to address that. Jim, that comment did come at a, up at our meeting on Saturday, and we are purchasing fuel in partnership with Elizabeth City, so the airport manager will also welcome, Bob, your group to come over there also. And the rates for the fuel, I believe, are at the same rate.
I just think the tax, I'm just, again, think taxes. Is, is there any way that they can, just they're all talking about landing there with fuel taxes?
Mr. Coler, please come forward, if you would.
I'm sorry.
Maybe we could-
He doesn't need that much to land. He just, he'll be able to land right down there near the terminal, as he does many times anyway, and just taxi over, move over where the fuel is, and take on the fuel. We're talking about 200 gallons a day.
Yeah, can we take the truck to where he can get it?
This, again, this is not our decision to make. I mean, we will contact the FAA to see what they allow us to do. But when we asked them, my understanding was, we were told that when the airport is closed, it's Xed, it's got nodums issued, it's closed. But we certainly can go back and, and see if there's any way-
Let's try.
-that we can accommodate.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's look into it and see what we can-
But again, that's FAA regulations. It's not ours.
Move it outside the fence.
Yeah, exactly.
By the other fuel farm. There's a space there, big enough, he could set the helicopter down.
Maybe. Check and see. Just look into it.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to recess the regular meeting and ask for a motion to reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority Board.
So move.
Have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? As have it. Mr. Scanlon, who?
Diane's still with us? Mrs. Nordstrom, please. She's actually on this board, so.
Yeah, well, I knew that. I didn't know if you wanted to open.
But I will be quick with this presentation, but first of all, explain why you're sitting here now. When the Board of Commissioners adopted, or when the General Assembly adopted the last change, the oxytax, they created this entity called a Tourism Development Authority, and that Tourism Development Authority is authorized under the Act to expend the proceeds of oxytax. Further in that language, it says who the Tourism Development Authority is. It's actually the Board of Commissioners, plus one person, a non-voting member, which is our Tourism Director. So you're sitting here under the statutes that created, the last statute that created the oxytax. It took us a long time for folks to finally kind of grasp the oxytax and get the old approval rate together. And so what I need to do now is, first of all, is explain to you that oxytax actually is three different local legislations that approve the oxytax. The first one was granted to us in 1987. The 1% was 1991, and the 2% was 2003. We've got to think of it in those ways, because each one has a different restriction on how it can be used. Here's the statutory definition restriction. The original 3% goes 100% to tourism-related. We'll get into that definition later. The additional 1% is a two, two-thirds of it has to go to promote travel and tourism, one-third for tourism-related, and the last 2% has the same distribution. That's a lot of jargon in the general statute. What does it mean? Well, this is what it means. In the upcoming budget, we're projecting that we will collect $8.9 million in oxytax. If you go in and apply the percentages against the, the different pieces, you'll see that just under $3 million has got to be spent and obligated towards promoting travel and tourism. Where just under $6 million goes to tourism-related expenditures. The bottom line is the TDA only has so much flexibility in how they allocate and direct these resources. The statute takes care of a big part of that. Let's start with promoting travel and tourism, and what does that mean? Here's a statutory definition of what that means. It's, this one is pretty straightforward. It's basically the marketing and advertising, whether it's in pamphlets or other materials, the research done, and the staff time included, to promote Currituck County. This piece is basically Diane's budget, and what she does, and you have a Tourism Advisory Board that oversees that operation. Of that part, the, about $3 million part, you can see, this is how that breaks down. It pays for not only Diane's staff that does the marketing promoting, but also her staff and the part-time folks that manage our two welcome centers, and the cost of operating those two centers are built into this piece. And as you can see, by far, the biggest thing that money does is it goes to promote Currituck County. Almost 70% of that overall budget promotes the county. This is the mix of how that is to be spent. We have slowly, over the years, have been moving out of print advertisement and more into computer-based, internet-based advertising. internet-based advertising, but the marketing plan that was created by the tourism staff and endorsed by the Tourism Advisory Board has got this breakdown from the print ads to internet marketing. We do some television ads up in the northeast, some printed materials and special promotions. If anybody has an interest in exactly what all that is, the entire marketing plan, the tourism staff has put together in a 2011, 2012 marketing plan, it details down to exactly where and how we're placing the money. That's available, is it on your website? It's a web, the public can go on the website and see exactly how all of our promotion efforts are being spent and what vehicles we're doing that in. The other half, the part of the oxy tax that has, the commissioners have probably a little bit more discretion on how they direct, it is based on the tourism-related expenditures. Again, this is a statutory definition. I'll pour it to your attention, there's several pieces in this definition that I think are really important that a lot of people seem to gloss over. The first big one is in the discretion and judgment of the Board of Commissioners. So who determines whether it's tourism-related? You do. It also, there's a perception that it has to be driven for tourism. That's only part of the definition. As you can see, designed for lodging facilities, meeting facilities, recreational facilities, and convention facilities, all in the guise of attracting tourists and business travelers. So it actually has a broader scope of allowable expenditures than what we generally think. In fact, they even threw beach nourishment in, although we've never really discussed beach nourishment. This is a list of, there are seven items listed there. This is 92% of how we are going to spend the tourism-related expenditures, will go into these items. Historic preservation, that is a project to, the continued effort in the Jarvisburg Historic Color School, as well as the historic jail next to Currituck County, or to the county courthouse. One of the things that Diane's team has been working on as a cultural Harrison's part of tourism, and that money is to support those two projects. The Beach Lifeguard Service, 660,000 dollars. Again, we talked earlier in our budget about the Royal Center, this money's being transferred over to the Royal Center to, the enhancement's there. Eight hundred thousand dollars proposed to go to the operations of the Whalehead Club. Maple Park, we talked about the programs going on there, there's a million dollars there. The last two items is additional law enforcement and EMS services to provide additional coverage on the Outer Banks, and a million dollars for both of those respectively.
Mr. Scanlon, the Royal Center, what are some of the projects that'll be ongoing there?
Again, that is to some non-equestrian types of improvements to the facility. For folks that have been there, we've got a nice bulk-headed access to the sound. It is to go in there and develop a kayaking and canoe launching area, a trail system, a bird-watching system, picnicking shelters, those kinds of amenities to add to, just expand the usability of that particular property.
Thank you.
Just like was presented earlier, I'm presenting tonight to you the oxy tax budget for your consideration. On June 20th, we would have to have a public hearing in support of that budget, and just like the other funds, it will need to be approved and effective by July 1st. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that. And again, these budgets will be on the county website, and will be available for public inspection also.